Okay, I'd like to call the order. The North Canton City Council Meeting, Monday, June 10th, 7:00 PM. Opening prayer. Uh, Mark? Anybody here? Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Opening prayer, Mark. Do we have someone? No, clear.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Thank you for giving us this wonderful community to help lead, or thank you for giving us the honor to help be up front here, to help lead the community. Help us to listen, help us to learn, help us to know what your will will be to going forward to help this community. Give us the courage, the determination, and the compassion to lead this city into the future. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Laura, will you please call the roll?
Peters.
Here.
Holtz.
Here.
Saretta.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Keithling.
Here.
Waren.
Here.
Fonte.
Here.
Seven present.
All right, thank you very much. Before we get into consideration here, I need a motion to amend Special Counsel Meeting Minutes, May 23rd, 2019, page seven, line 13. Speaking, it should be Ms. Waren.
So moved.
Second. All favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay, thank you. For your consideration, the motion is second to approve as presented. Special Committee of the whole meeting minutes, May 13th, 2019. Council meeting minutes, May 13th, 2019. Committee of the whole meeting minutes, May 20th, 2019. Special Counsel meeting minutes, May 20th, 2019. Special Counsel meeting minutes, May 21st, 2019. And Special Counsel meeting minutes, as amended, May 23rd, 2019. And finally, financial report, April 2019.
Motion to consider as amended.
Second.
All favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
I meant abstain.
Abstain. Fonte abstain. Okay, at this time, if you wish to address counsel, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Just a reminder, there's a five-minute time limit, and if you have questions for counsel, they'll be addressed at the end of the meeting during, or council reports. So.
Chuck Osborne, 307 Fairview Street, southeast North Canton, Ohio. I often wonder if anybody really realizes why we even have these meetings? Why do we have the processes we have? Why there's a paper trail for these processes? You seven are our elected representatives, but I don't see much representation of the public going on at all. Here's my experience with city government here in the last week. Had a recent zoning board of appeals meeting, which Mrs. Keithling and Mrs. Waren have pushed through legislation and a change in the charter that they don't want to attend. This last meeting of the ZBA was very interesting. And first, I'll get to the push for one of your resolutions tonight, change in the name of the meetings to adjudication. I dare say, all of you have been to college up here, right? Mr. Fonte says no. But the ones of you who have, did you know you matriculated? Does anybody know what matriculation means? You enrolled in college. But how often do we say that? Hey, I'm gonna go matriculate next week. Or your kids tell you, or you've pushed your kids, you need to matriculate soon, so you get the classes you want, or whatever. That means enrolling in college. Simple as that. Adjudication. Yes, nobody has argued that we are not adjudicating property rights at a zoning board of appeals meeting. Nobody's ever denied that. But how often do we utilize that terminology? Does anybody even know what it means? There is absolutely no reason to change this from public hearing to adjudication. None. There was never any denial that we're adjudicating property rights. It has stood for 60 years in this city. It's intimidating to the public, and then to tell them, we're going to cross-examine you. Now, I was cross-examined by Law Director Fox this last week, Wednesday. He felt that his duty as the legal representative to cross-examine me, and his main point was to ask me where I live, to point out that, hey, you have no dog in the fight, because this was an issue over on Penny. Nobody's denying I lived in a proximity, and I was gonna be immediately impacted. But every citizen has an interest in seeing our laws that are carried out. Otherwise, why even have a hearing? Just invite the party who wants the variance, and the parties who are immediately impacted, and exclude everybody else? So there's no reason to change this at all. It has worked for years. People are not gonna come up here and lie on the record and have it preserved for 150 years in the records. We have plenty commission members who are sensible enough, appointed by our mayor. They can judge the testimony as presented to them, whether they think it's beneficial, impactful, or has no bearing on the situation. So there's no reason for this. You're just creating power authority for Mr. Fox. He's praising himself as the jury, and he's leading these commission members. Lastly, before my time runs out, I've made a record request, and it's repeatedly denied. I copied everybody here at City Hall, because I'm tired of playing games, what I call whack-a-mole. I asked the wrong person for the record, because they can conceivably say, I don't have it, when they know, in fact, they did have it, or they could have it, but they've handed it off to somebody else. So I've asked you seven, and made you aware, I'm hoping you can help me with these record requests. Otherwise, you leave me no choice than to go through the claims process in Columbus, and then with an attorney. I've already talked to an attorney. There's no basis.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Your time is up. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Please step forward, state your... Yes, sir.
Stephen Pustay, 3593 Dovershire, Masslin, Ohio.
Please, sir, begin, please.
Stephen Pustay, P-U-S-T-A-Y, 3593 Dovershire Northwest, Masslin, Ohio. And I have some materials I'd like to leave for counsel's consideration, if I can.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Stephen Pustay, and I'm here representing Terry Marshall, a North Canton resident and board member of the Hall of Fame City Pickleball Club, who was hospitalized yesterday and is unable to attend this evening. I'm here representing, as well, the members of the Hall of Fame City Pickleball Club and its 154 members, the Northeast Ohio Pickleball Club and its nearly 200 members, the First Fans Pickleball Mail Serve list with over 325 members, and as a United States Pickleball Association Ambassador from Masslin, Jackson, Ohio, more than 3 million active pickleball players across the country. I am here, first and foremost, to thank you for your generous support of the fastest-growing sport in the United States, and your installation of the new pickleball courts on Glenwood Avenue in North Canton. As an ambassador of the USAPA, one of my primary roles is to provide support for communities in installation, maintenance, funding, and design of court facilities, and I offer, not as a criticism, but as an example of our services, a few brief examples, and excerpts from the Pickleball Courts Construction Manual, that is funded by the American Sports Builders Association on behalf of the USAPA. Given the existing footprint of the court surface at Glenwood Avenue, using USAPA-recommended championship court overruns, which are larger than normal, the document I provided will show you that you could have easily placed six courts where you have four. If you had installed the smaller provisional court structure, as also recommended by the USAPA, without any additional cost, you could have installed eight courts at that location. And we say that just as a reference to let you know that by contacting the USAPA and making those arrangements, we can help advise in that way. We believe that for costs of less than $5,000, the existing fencing could have been kept, and the courts could have been completed. However, I'm also pleased to tell you that your courts are in full use. For the first time tomorrow, we're going to be running a pickleball clinic. We will have 16 members of your community attending an HOFC stroke clinic. We've also contracted for the first of what we anticipate will be an annual pickleball tournament, called the Firecracker Tournament, to coincide with your July 4th run, and we have 16 mixed doubles teams already signed up, and we expect that tournament will grow within the next three weeks before registration closes. Your courts are already in use by, on a regular basis on Wednesdays, with a league that is playing there, and we anticipate those numbers will grow as well. The USAPA is also mindful of making communities aware of modest but growing potential for court use fees. For example, last week, the Benjamin F. Edwards Tournament, held in the courts in Mentor, Ohio, garnered the city a $1,000 use fee. Tournament directors there told me that the city receives nearly $4,000 in annual use fees for tournaments, shootouts, and leagues. Canton City Stadium Courts are currently drawing 20% of tournament entry fees from all HOFC events held there, and Joe Harold, the tournament director for our club, believes that by the end of the summer, more than $500 will be returned to the city in usage fees. Additionally, larger tournaments, like the Mentor Tournament, which draws participants from five states and Canada as well, brings thousands of extra dollars of revenue to local hotels and restaurants and other vendors in the area. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not call to your attention some issues in the surface installation on the Glenwood Courts, which we have previously addressed with some city officials. There are not an insignificant number of surface bubbles which prevent a clean and accurate bounce of the ball. I've played dozens of matches on all four of your courts. We've found all four courts have some serious dead spots, which make recreational play and tournament play difficult and problematic. I believe that the outstanding location, design of the Glenwood Courts, will allow for seeds of future tournaments that can draw from across the state, and urge you to consider efforts to correct the issues with the surface of the court, so that your city, your taxpayers, and your pickleball community will be proud of the installation there. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
I'm Vince Lehman of 1494 Swigert Road in New Franklin, Ohio. I'm here from Johnson Controls, and just wanted to take a couple of minutes to reference or clarify some things for ordinance both 28 and 29. I know that, you know, over the course of the last couple of council meetings, there have been some questions with respect to, or some, maybe some confusion or additional information needed with respect to the process of how we would go through and implement a project, as described in both of those ordinances and the study associated with that. To that end, wanted to just kind of give some clarification to that. As we go through and put a project like this together, the way that we normally start out is we go through and do a complete feasibility study, to look at all the different alternatives and the different options that the city would have in order to move through, in this case, the implementation of a sludge press over at the water treatment plant. And in doing that, it kind of draws out a little bit of the time associated with putting a project like that together. In the case of the city of North Canton here, we have a little bit of an advantage, and that advantage is that Mark, and Robert, and some other people have been pretty diligent, actually, which is nice for us, it's not something we see all the time, in going through and investigating, you know, different options that are out there, and you kind of have an idea of where you want to go with a plate-style sludge press with that. Now, that's great, and that may be the way that makes most sense for you to do, but what we would be doing as we move forward into this, is doing a feasibility study, although it would be a somewhat truncated one, to provide you information with respect to lifecycle costing and the overall pros and cons of the various technologies that are out there in order to determine the best way for you to go and allow you to make a more informed decision. Once that is done, the next step in the process is that we actually go through and start putting the design together. As we put the design together, we work with our engineering teams, along with, in conjunction with multiple contractors, to put together the concept and the pricing, once you have an idea of where you want to go. And we would help you in making that idea of where you want to go, and that's what the feasibility study would be for. During that process, we put together sets of drawings and schematics and what have you that come into play for things like, for example, low-interest loans offered by DPW that are really coming to play in October, so you'd want to have an application set up in September for those. We would have a package together and work with you to help procure that, and move forward to get that in play as you move forward with this project. The other thing that we look at are any additional grants and things that are out there as well, to help from a funding aspect of this, to give you options with that, so it can give you, you know, a whole, I guess, array of not only the possible solutions and the lifecycle costing with that, but also the opportunities for ways to fund that outside of this. Now, we work with this in a partnership with you in order to make sure that you can make the decision that you're most comfortable with, that best fits the needs of the city and of the constituents that you have throughout the city, to make sure it's an effective and efficient process. As we do that, we get multiple pricing then from the contractors. We go through and implement it, from the standpoint of providing project management, construction management, as well as dealing with helping you move forward with the EPA permitting requirements, because you're gonna have to get a re-permit on the plant in order to operate it, because this is a change of process for you. So we would help you and assist you in putting all that together as you move forward as well. Once that's done, and the implementation is complete, our teams make sure that, in fact, it's done correctly, that it meets the intent that you had as you move forward, and it's done at no change orders or no cost increases. That's one of the things, one of the reasons, quite frankly, that I do what I do right now. Because as you come to us, you're coming to us as experts. You should treat us as experts, you should expect that we give you the best opportunities, and that as we go through and indicate to you what the costs are to implement this, that there's no cost overruns or change orders associated with that. Upon completion of the project, we then will go through and work with your staff to help from a training perspective, because once this is put together, whichever system you decide to use, once the system is put together, there is ongoing maintenance, it's a mechanical system, that's going to happen, and there's operating constraints and requirements that you have to do in order to comply with and meet with the EPA guidelines for your operating permits. So we help you put all of that together as well. In essence, what we're doing is providing you with a turnkey type of implementation to allow you to go through and get not only the most efficient, the best long-term operating process as you move forward into this, the best funding mechanisms that you can work with, and prepare you to operate it, not only today, but well into the future, to make sure that this is a good decision not only today, but a good decision well down the road. And that's why we would like to be your partner with them. If you have any other questions, please feel free to just give us a call and let us know, you do have our cards. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Larry, you're up.
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. Much to the ire of one councilman, the repository, a couple months ago, published my letter to the editor titled, "Appointment of Council Clerk in North Canton: Hints at Inside Manipulation." Rest assured, at the appropriate time during this election year, other letters are in the works expressing my opinion. One good title might be, "Does Hypocrisy Run Rampant in North Canton Government?" Another letter might be titled, "Does North Canton Government Use Bowling and Intimidation in Their Government Practice?" The last leads me to my recollection, three years ago, June 2016, I, along with Mr. Rod Covey, remember him? Was approached by our law director in a very unprofessional manner, following a meeting at Dogwood Park. A physical confrontation could have easily played out, after I challenged him as to why he was trying to bully and intimidate us. Only when I threatened to call the police, did he scurry away like a scared weasel. I personally made a terrible mistake by not calling the police, but my rationale at that time was that it would have been an embarrassment to the city. Like I said, a terrible mistake on my part, after subsequently watching two individuals, alias Mutt and Jeff, from a comic strip of years gone by, continue to make a mockery of sound government practice in North Canton. Then I only furthered my mistake by conveying this problem to the mayor, who stated he would discuss this with the individual in question. Mr. Mayor, based on his conduct up until a couple months ago, when, as I understand, he was counseled on his job performance, I can't believe you backed up your words to me. I am a senior citizen, a United States Army veteran, and damn proud of it. Two weeks ago, this country honored, with many somber ceremonies, those deceased who served our country with pride, dignity, dedication, and bravery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your kind words, as I listened to your remarks on Memorial Day. But, Mr. Mayor, as I reflect back on North Canton government's hostile attitude towards me, a veteran, Mr. Osborne, a veteran, senior citizens, and the likes of Mrs. Rolls and Mrs. Baumann included, I believe your remarks to be words and only words. Then, just last week, June 6th, the 75th anniversary of D-Day, we honored those veterans, living and deceased, who stormed the beaches of Normandy. We watched a 97-year-old veteran proudly peritrued through nearly the same location he landed as a member of his airborne division nearly 75 years ago. This time, he enjoyed his jump, as he landed in a peacetime environment and not facing enemy fire. We visualize the bravery of those storming the beaches, bullets hitting their landing crafts, some heroes killed instantly as their landing crafts opened. Did they quit? No. We know they prevailed, and those who survived came home to some initial fanfare, settled into the American way of life, and became part of one of the greatest generations known to this country, as labeled by Tom Brokaw, former NBC news anchor. I have spoke often with utter disgust of the actions displayed by this city government during the past six years. Led by Council President and the Law Director, you embarked on a mission to destroy the likes of Chuck Osborne, Larry Tripp, or anyone displaying the initiative to question your personal agendas. Quite a contrast to those honored the past couple weeks. Mr. Revolt, since you were in office six years ago, let me please excuse you for my next remark to counsel.
Mr. Tripp, your time is up. Thank you.
Silence on this matter is not golden.
Mr. Tripp.
It only illustrates a matter of fact and truth.
I'm gonna ask you to sit down.
Thank you.
Larry, thank you for your service.
No, I don't need to thank you. Those that died, I don't want to thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
He addressed me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Please step forward. See none, we will move... Oh, yeah, yes, please. Dave, come on forward.
Good evening, everyone. May I approach the counsel, sir?
Do you have a handout?
Yeah.
If you want to put it on the table there, we'll have...
What does he pass him?
Are you have copies for everyone? There you go.
Thank you, sir.
I need one. There's... Thank you. Well, once again, I'm back to talk to you. On January 1, 2017, two laws were passed for operations of slow-moving vehicles in Ohio by the Ohio Revised Code in Columbus and Stark County. They both approved it. I believe the last time I was here, or I know the last time I was here, my request to have golf carts permitted to operate within the city limits of North Canton was denied. There may have, this may have been due to some misinterpretation of information that was available, if you would have done the homework on your own, instead of asking someone else what they thought. Golf carts can't be used on roads with speed limits exceeding 35 mile an hour. Local governments have to approve use on public roads. I think that's a good thing. The city of Columbus said, we can do this in Ohio. Stark County says, we can do it in Stark County, but the cities, the municipalities, such as North Canton, can either approve or deny this action. I'm for that. That's the will of the people. Vote yes, vote no. I'm asking you to vote yes. Safety inspections, and I think this is where maybe some lines got crossed. Before you, you have a list that shows what is required for a golf cart, just to get the title. The inspection, which I have provided a name for you, is done by a sheriff's deputy. Stark County Sheriff will come to your house at no charge, inspect your cart. He throws a state inspection sticker on your front windshield, lower left-hand corner, signs off on the inspection paper, you can then go and apply for your title. After your title, you have to get your insurance. Of course, you have to have a driver's license, there's age restrictions. If you look at the laws under Ohio Revised Code, 4501-30, they show two, approved operating equipment and everything, it's all listed on there. You must take the bill of sale, the inspection sheet, and insurance card. They don't ask you to sign the waiver that says, do you have insurance? You have to show the insurance card. It's the first time in my 67 years, 76 years, here in Ohio, that I have been asked for an actual insurance card. Here, sign a waiver, tell me you've got insurance. I don't trust people that much. I'd rather see the card, which it'd make me do for my golf cart. Then you pay your taxes, you get your pledge, you get your bill, and you can do it. I understand some of your thoughts and some of your worries. You're worried about traffic on Main Street. Fine, put a stipulation in your ordinance. Main Street can't be used by utility vehicles, as stated in the Ohio Revised Code, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. But you're not stopping me from crossing it. I don't use Main Street. I don't use Portage Avenue. You people did me a favor, like when on Charlotte, you dropped the speed limit down to 30 mile an hour and that stuff, because you gave me permission to ride the street. But I can't take my vehicle there, because you won't give me permission to use my vehicle. And quickly, I'll just say, I'll let you read that, because you all have a copy of it. I did have a garage sale, like I said the last time. I had four people from North Canton inquire about my golf cart, and the one thing I hated to do is three people I turned down. The fourth man, I hated to turn down. His daughter brought him there to look at the golf cart, because he's handicapped, and I refused to sell it to him. Why? Because I already know what your stipulations are. Your stipulations say no. And I didn't figure it was fair to take the man's money.
Thank you, Dave.
So I just ask you again, please consider this, and this time, maybe some... So I just, I just ask you again, please consider this, and this time maybe someone could have the courtesy to let me know which way you may decide on whether we can use a golf cart within the city of North Canton or not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We could talk after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else wishing to address Council? Step forward, state your name and address. Now, see none, we will move on to old business. We have a motion. Steph, are we, before we do this, what are we gonna do with this here? Twenty-eight and twenty-nine, are we...
I think we have some changes that we would like them to put in writing before we look at it again. We had another report that was done this week, and I think that they addressed a lot of the issues from that report. And really, we're going to do those things that they talked about in the report anyways, some feasibility study, to working with Rob on a low-interest loan that we would need to have done by, I think, October. So the timing with our break, we still need to move on some things, but I think that we would be more comfortable if all that was in writing. I know Darrell met with them, the mayor met with them, and so I think we could get a lot of questions answered. I don't know, any other thoughts, Darrell? Did you have anything?
Just gonna say, timing, I think timing is an issue. What we might do is ask Johnson Control, have any additional information to us, and hold a special meeting next Monday night for the third and final vote.
Where'd you get that?
If we have that information on hand. So you'll need a motion on that matter. We'll just leave this on the table.
We'll do that at the end when we talk about the schedule.
Very good.
Special meeting. As far as ordinances, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so we want a table?
Right.
Okay.
I think they already are on the table actually.
No, we brought them off the table last week.
Meeting technically. All right, so they're off the table then?
Yeah, so I need two separate motion and motions to for each one. So I obtain a motion a second to table ordinance twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And may I have a motion a second to table?
So moved.
Twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance number thirty-six dash nineteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance to amend section 1171.02, Superintendent of Permits and Inspections of the City of North Canton's Codified Ordinances, to replace the superintendent's reporting official from the city engineer to the director of administration.
Thank you. Chairman Keesley.
This is our final reading, changing who reports to who. The official is now moving to the director of administration. On a motion, we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance number thirty-eight dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance amending chapter 155, personnel regulations of part one, administrative code of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, to clarify certain provisions with the sick leave, vacation, and leave-of-absence regulations, and to update the titles and compensation of certain positions to more closely align with the current and future city operations.
All right, thank you. This is the third reading. Unless there's any last-minute changes or comments, I obtain a motion a second to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance number forty-one dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Member revolt, nay? Six, one. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file on the director's office, and authorizing the mayor upon board of control approval to enter into an agreement for the collection of residential garbage, rubbish, recyclables, and yard waste in the city of North Canton for a five-year period with four one-year renewal options commencing September 1, 2019.
Thank you, Chairman Serrano.
Yeah, we had a good discussion on this. This is the third reading. Unless there's any other discussion, I move we adopt the third reading.
I got a question on the recyclables. We talked a little bit about, a lot of it now, they're so picky, they throw them away. So we're really thinking we're recycling, but we're really not. So I was wondering, is this the one where we said they have to do some certain training to let us know, you can't throw a pizza box away with a greasy wax paper in it? Like, is there more education there?
Yes, sir. As part of the bid specs, I've included an educational component that we didn't have before.
Because, I mean, honestly, I think it's pretty surprising that, you know, if you don't rinse out your wine bottle or your pop bottle or whatever, they can't use it. So I think those things are important if we're gonna try to get some benefit out of the recycling.
Yep, I agree.
Just a, I concur, and I think there was an excellent article that Mayor Held was involved with in the repository to explain that very scenario for people, that it's quality, not quantity, we're looking for as far as to do true recycling. So I appreciate that being entered into the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any doubt, throw it out?
Yeah.
Recycle right.
Recycle right.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
No, I just, excuse me, I, again, basis for my, by no vote is a preference that the contract had been extended as opposed to rebid. Go forward from there.
Gotcha.
Motion's out to adopt the third reading.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Member revolt, nay? Six, one? Approves. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, second reading, resolution four dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, section 1181.4, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section 1179.10, variances, subsection C, reviewed by the Board of the City's Codified Ordinances, to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Thank you. Chairman Keesley?
Yes. This is an ordinance where we're going to change the name. We're gonna send it over to Planning to have a conversation about potentially changing the name of our public hearing to an adjudication hearing. I did look up adjudication, it matters. It is a legal process by which an arbitrator or a judge reviews evidence and argumentation, including legal reasoning set forth by opposing parties or litigants, to come to a decision which determines rights and obligations between the parties. And I think that's the biggest issue we have is, it's pretty, these are pretty important hearings. These are the rights of the property owners, and they can be appealed, and they aren't coming back to us, thank God. They're going to a court of law, and if, if we have people on the record giving us their opinion, that is extremely subjective in most cases. If you're the property owner beside somebody, around somebody, you want the law and you want proof. You don't want just opinion. And I think by calling it adjudication hearing and making the people know that what they say is on the record and it is proof and could end up in a court of law, I think it makes it more, has more validity to it, and it protects the property owners.
I agree. Darrell?
Just to amplify Marsha's comment, there is ample case law here in Ohio on these matters, particularly for issues before zoning board of appeals and for conditional uses that require an oath. Matters before planning commission, public opinion is welcome. But again, we are, we the city are attempting to align our practices, and the expectation is set in the ordinance that the courts require oath.
I agree.
And given the fact that we are often subject of litigation on matters sometimes controversial, I think it is imperative that we, we align our practices with the court's expectations.
Very well said.
Right, and I think we would, I understand what Chuck's saying, people are intimidated by it, but if they were the ones on the other end of it and want to protect their rights, they want to know that they're being protected as well. I think that's really important.
Absolutely.
So I feel we move forward and send it to Planning to let them give us a recommendation.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Serrano.
Serrano. Okay, good. All right, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, second reading, resolution five dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section 1177.05, public hearing noticed by the Planning Commission of the city's codified ordinances to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Keesley.
Yes, it's the exact same resolution, just for the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
A motion, we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion a second to read by title only, second reading, resolution six dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, section 1181.04, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section 1177.10, action by city council, to action by city council for similar use recommendations.
Thank you, Chairman Keesley.
Yes, this is also a resolution asking the Planning Commission to look at, in our charter, the little gray area as far as conditional uses and similar uses. Conditional uses do not come back to council, but similar uses do, and they sort of get blurred together in our charter. So we'd like to sort of separate it out and make it a little more black and white. So I motion we send it over.
Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. On to new business. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number forty-three dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance amending ordinance fifty dash zero-three, zoning ordinance of the city of North Canton, to change certain parcels along Orchard Avenue Northeast, Howard Street Northeast, and Whitworth Street Northeast, as recommended by the Planning Commission, to a mixed-use overlay and residential to family where necessary provide relief to the residents and businesses therein, and bring the zoning districts map and pertinent parcels in line with current uses, together with providing opportunities for future residents and businesses, as illustrated below and in the zoning districts map attached here to and incorporated herein.
All right, thank you, Chairman Keesley.
Yes, the map is correct. It currently has nine parcels on it. We spoke about it last week. Any questions, comments?
It's all taken care of. I don't know, any other 101 type thing is in there?
Yep.
Yes.
All the numbers are represented.
Mr. Durio knows that today I looked at the map.
Okay. All in then?
All in.
I motion we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number forty-four dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to advertise and receive bids, and authorizing the mayor upon board of control approval to enter into a treaty contract for the cleaning of sludge lagoons at North Canton Drinking Water Treatment Plant and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Serrano.
Okay, we had discussion on this, and I know we have discussion out there about sludge lagoons. We're still, Pat, all right to go ahead with this then?
Yes.
Or are you not glad to table it if you think you need, have time to decide what we want to do?
No, because even if you decided today what you want to do, it's gonna take you two years to put the thing in place.
Just beyond that, okay. Any other discussion about that? I think we've covered it. Motion to approve, first reading?
So moved. Second?
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number forty-five dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance amending chapter 111, council of the codified ordinance of the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.01, meetings, time, place, and recording procedure, by adding subsection J as described below.
Thank you. Chairman Revolt?
Yes, this is the companion to the item that follows, and item J, under vote, requires that all transcribed meetings shall state those city officials in attendance and seated at the dais. This in effect is the equivalent to a committee report, or the part of a committee report at which we check off the members of the administration who are present. So again, this establishes when we have a transcript for the record, which members of the administration are present.
So you're...
Yes, please.
So you're saying people on the record for voice will say they're here, and that takes care of the little piece of paper we did?
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're, we're...
Okay.
The transcript will become the new committee report, and as part of that, we'll have, we'll verify that either the court reporter or the council president will make sure that those individuals are part of the, their presence is noted in the record. If there are no other questions, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-five dash 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the companion piece, motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number forty-six dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
An ordinance amending chapter 111, council of the codified ordinance of the city of North Canton, specifically section 111.06, council meeting agenda by amending subsections A and B as described below.
Thank you, Chairman Revolt.
Yes, the amendments are two. The first is that legislation may be placed on the agenda only upon the clerk's receipt of a committee's favorable written report. So that's the old way, write the report. Or that notice that the applicable committee meeting shall be transcribed. In addition, legislation may be placed on the council agenda only upon the council president or designate publicly polling council, and a majority of the members recommending the legislation be placed on the council agenda. So in lieu of the written report, which we're familiar, which the preparation is sometimes spotty, we are going to use the court reporter as the committee report. So preceding ordinance, we'll note the administration who's present, council's role has already been, the council has already been, that role has been called, and then we'll have the transcription. That will suffice as the committee report. But just like on the form, the committee is gonna have to, the president will establish that there's a majority support for the legislation to proceed. And that'll be part of, again, the transcript. So we'll have one or the other, preferably the more detailed and complete transcription.
Sounds good to me.
Questions? I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance forty-six dash 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance number forty-seven dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
The following is an ordinance enacted by the city of North Canton of Stark County, Ohio, hereafter referred to as the local public agency, for the purpose of entering into consent agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right. Remember, Chairman Fonte?
So, we just got the request on, uh, May thirty-first, so it's on an emergency, so we get it passed quickly. It's for signage, a hundred percent paid for by the state, uh, for replacement signs on forty-three, State Route forty-three. And that's the reason why it's on an emergency, so I move that we pass it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And may I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading of Resolution number seven dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton Codified Ordinance, section eleven eighty-one point zero four, requesting the Planning Commission review, consider and recommend or not recommend council's proposal to amend section eleven eighty-one point zero eight, action by city council regarding amending zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Chairman Keesley.
Yes, this is another, um, issue we want to bring to Planning's Commission to review for us regarding a little bit of discrepancy between our charter and our zoning code regarding, um, what part of the Planning Commission? Is it the public? The proposed, um, amend, any zone ordinances, regarding amending zoning ordinances. There's so much going on. Currently, there's a little bit of a conflict between the section in the zoning code and what the charter states, so we'd like to, we're asking them to look at removing section B and C from eleven eighty-one oh eight, and making it clean with the rest of the code, and just including section A of that. Do you want me to go into more detail?
Did we have discussion on them?
We did.
There's so many of them.
There's a lot, exactly. I motion we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, Resolution eight dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution on submission of request to the Stark County Auditor pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, section five-seven-oh-five-point-zero-three-B, to certify to the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, as the city's taxing authority, the total current tax valuation as a subdivision in the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for a renewal tax of one mil, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, sections fifty-seven-oh-five-point-one-nine, fifty-seven-oh-five-point-one-nine-one, and fifty-seven-oh-five-point-two-five, for the purpose of providing funds for the city's portion of storm water sewer improvements in the city of North Canton for a period of five years, tax years twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four, commencing in twenty-twenty, first due in calendar year twenty-twenty-one, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairwoman Waren.
It's really exactly as it says. Uh, we're just getting the process moving in order to get it on, um, it is on emergency, um, to get it on the ballot. So this one is for the sewer, and the next one will be for the streets. It's renewals.
Is there a motion to?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, Resolution nine dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution on submission of request to the Stark County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-seven-oh-five-point-zero-three-B, to certify to the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, as the city's taxing authority, the total current tax valuation as a subdivision, and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for a renewal tax of one mil, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, sections fifty-seven-oh-five-point-one-nine, fifty-seven-oh-five-point-one-nine-one, and fifty-seven-oh-five-point-two-five, for the purpose of providing funds for the city's portion of street improvements in the city of North Canton for a period of five years, tax years twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four, commencing in twenty-twenty, first due in calendar year twenty-twenty-one, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman Waren.
Again, uh, the same, um, act that we're trying to get it on the ballot, so this is, again, a renewal for one mil for the streets, and it's emergency.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading of Resolution ten dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
A resolution requesting the Planning Commission recommend to city council amendments to North Canton's codified ordinance, chapter eleven thirty-three, single-family and two-family residential district regulations, section eleven thirty-three point zero eight, accessory use regulations, subsection E, fences and walls, and to include language for fence heights and flagpole height replacement requirements.
Thank you, Chairman Keesley. Excuse me? Sorry about that. Right in the middle beyond.
Oh, yes, we'd like to send this off to planning to consider a text amendment to our code to modernize the height regulations pertaining to fencing, and to include language replacements and height requirements for the flagpoles. Kind of just update our outdated code. I motion we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, reports. Deputy Director Corino.
All right, just have a few items. Um, one, as you head east on East Maple Street, just passing Eric's Grocery Store in the corner of Sutton, he's probably seen the substation. So a great collaboration with Rice's Nursery, the North Canton Garden Club. They planted some nice, uh, burning bushes, some dwarf plants there, planted some boulders, just to try to make a substation in a residential area a little prettier. So it's really nice and really cl- proud of that, zero cost to the city. A P covered that all, Rice's Nursery. Um, also, mark your calendars now. This is an event open to everyone here as well as all of the public, after children's hospitals inviting us to celebrate the grand opening, and that's going to be on Saturday, June twenty-second, ten AM to one PM. The ribbon cutting will be at eleven AM. Um, that's, uh, it's free, open to the public, features a self-guided tour, family entertainment, and life refreshments. So Saturday, June twenty-second. So we have.
Thank you. Engineer Graham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm happy to report that kind of our first wave of four projects is, are basically about done. Our Elmwood Waterline is completely done, just punch list. Our Price Park South Loop Walking Path is done, but there's some very minor punch lists there. Our twenty-nineteen paving program is completely done with the exception of twelve Mr. Manhole Methods, and that's going to happen, both happen today or tomorrow on Wednesday, so that one's real close to being knocked out. And then, the last project in that first wave is the Eastbury Waterline Project, and that's probably got maybe two more weeks. We're getting real close. It's been dragging on since about January, but, uh, residents may grade out there, so that's almost done. I guess we're ready to start our second wave of projects. Projects and more havoc that can wreak, uh, wreak elsewhere in town. Uh, the biggest one started last week is Glenwood Waterline Replacement. It's down to serve the, our three medical facilities down there, actually four, Mercy on the north side. Uh, that got started last week, and so far, so good, no surprises. Uh, having our pre-construction meeting tomorrow for Weber Avenue Reconstruction, we've talked a lot about that one in the last year or so, and the needs out there. And then when our Eastbury job is done, uh, the same contractor has our Watkins-Lorrell Waterline, as we talked about. Uh, that's going to get started hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so we're going to shift our mayhem from one part of town to another. And then later in the summer, we've got a third wave of projects, so we can talk about that. If there's any questions, please mark it for us.
Rob, yeah, and Pat put out a, um, road closure. Um, will we get to share that on our website and Facebook and all that too?
Yeah.
Okay. And Rob, I have another question. I know it's not in the city of North Canton, but the, um, the, the trail where you connect from, um, Washington Square there over to the high school, Glen Oak High School, do you have any idea when that leg is going to
be? I can check the Stark Parks and see, and they've been working to, to, yeah, get that connected from Hoover through Washington Square to, in the plane to get to Glen Oak. So I can check on that.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head.
No, no big deal. I just, um, I, I just had some questions from constituents.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So I know it's, uh, you know, they're excited because eventually it's going to lead down to Jevasi Vineyard and some other places, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just paid a lot of use once.
Oh, man. No doubt.
Yep.
Yeah, it's going to be cool. All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, I would like to introduce our intern, one of our interns, Ben. You were just walking out there.
You tried to get out of here.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, Ben, Ben is a, uh, Ben, why don't you introduce yourself? You're a senior, you're going to be a senior this year at Walsh?
I'll be a senior at Walsh University studying political science.
Okay, and can you tell us some of the projects you're working on for us? I mean, Ben is incredible. I mean, this young man is a, is a policy machine. So he's already put together, uh, he's putting together, well, you know, in the process, putting together the, the policy for the sidewalks, right?
Uh, sidewalk placement, cost-sharing program.
Cost-sharing program. And, and your major again at Walsh is?
Local science.
Local science and statistics, right? You love statistics?
Um, yes. My true passion is statistics. Um, I've majored in economics, and would have majored in that if we had an economics major.
Yes. And so, um, no, Ben, Ben is doing an incredible job. I mean, it's amazing what one individual can put together and, uh, you know, for the city, so it's, he's, he's, you're really doing excellent. And one of the things, one of the projects, well, you have the sidewalks, what else? Funding grants, the skateboards?
C S D grants. Um, this year, I've been working on the parks expansion right now.
Parks expansion. And the other one that I find fascinating, because this is something that, you know, is something we've wanted to do, and it's something new, is the registration of security cameras.
Uh, private security cameras. Um, it's a list that the police can access that says residents have cameras. The police can't access private cameras directly, they still have to request footage from the private residents, but it lets people in North Canton tell the police that they're willing to help if a crime is committed in our area.
So, so you have like the Ring cameras, you have the, uh, the Nest cameras, I mean, there's so many different camera systems, but if they register them with the police, then if there's a crime in that particular area, because I know with council, we've talked about having cameras, you know, in major intersections and, and moving to have them at all the intersections, for not only, you know, uh, crime, but, uh, you know, to register who's, who's coming through and so forth, uh, if there is, in the event that there is a crime. Well, this goes well beyond it, because now, we'll have access, they'll provide willing access to their own private security cameras, which we can't get any better than that. And so, uh, Ben is putting that policy together, and, um, you're just doing a really impressive job. And so, uh, with that, now you can, now you can move on.
Thanks. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Welcome aboard.
He's got work to do. He's working over at Walsh, too, so he's a busy man. He said he couldn't stay for the whole, the whole meeting. And, um, and he's, he's working. So he, so he's got, uh, yeah, so he's got, uh, he's just incredible. Excellent, excellent job.
Yes. Good stuff. Well said. Thank you. Director of Administration?
Uh, very briefly, uh, want to talk about council's meeting schedule. Uh, when you get to that point, I would like that we, uh, add a, uh, regular meeting to the June seventeenth date, and also to the July first date. Two items that you already have before you would be, uh, on the Whitworth zoning. We would like to get that passed by June twenty-fourth, so if, if you can accommodate the, uh, the homeowner there, uh, and it turns out there's another parcel that's for sale now, two parcels for sale now, that are affected, that are in the list, that worked when we started this process, and they would be able to list their property and, and get it going without, uh, tying this thing up too much longer, too much longer. So if we could do that, and then with the action that you guys are taking with Johnson Controls, you were going to do one, a meeting anyway, so I'd like to tag the Whitworth in, and then if we get into anything else that, uh, comes up, I'll let you know.
Well, Pat, to that point, and I'm glad you brought that up, I'm looking here, and we already have a special council meeting.
Okay, you got that on?
It's on here. Didn't we?
Yeah, that was for the Whitworth zoning.
Okay, perfect.
But we could add Johnson.
To, without amending to, okay, we got it. So the meeting's already there. Okay, got it. Thank you, Pat. Go ahead.
And then, uh, either on the July first or July eighth meeting, uh, I would like to get, if I can coordinate the schedule, representative from, uh, federal government rep, in the U.S. Census Bureau would like to speak to city council about the upqu- upcoming twenty-twenty census and what they're trying to do, and how we in North Canton can, uh, help them get an accurate count in our city.
That representative will be a U.S. citizen, correct? It's a tug-in-cheek.
Yeah. I don't find it very amusing, quite frankly.
E- either want that, whatever you want, first or the eighth?
Well, I gotta, I just wanted to put you on notice. I'll send you the, a request over when I know for sure what date he's picked.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
All right, very good. Director of Finance?
Just to follow up on the meeting schedule, Tim and I were just conferring. The special council meeting next week was just for the zoning, so you may want to vote to add Johnson Controls to that.
Let's do a real call.
And then to follow up on Patrick, on July first, we're anticipating probably meeting a special council meeting after committee that night as well, for some of the things that are coming up in the next committee meeting, to get those done by summer recess.
On July first?
We can, you know, talk about that at the next meeting as well.
Let me do this, then. Let me make a motion, uh, to add to the existing Jul- June seventeenth meeting, a third vote for ordinances twenty-eight dash two thousand nineteen and twenty-nine dash two thousand nineteen, the Johnson Control ordinances.
That's a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And while we're at it, why don't we just go ahead and have a motion and a second to include a special council meeting July first? And what was the?
Agenda to follow?
Subject to follow.
Subject to, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. Got anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Director of Law?
No report, sir.
Okay. Number Volt?
No report.
Number Sirat?
No report.
Number Revolt, you want to talk about J.C. Fair or?
No, I don't, but, uh, because I'm an old guy.
It's raining.
Uh, it's raining. Uh, I would like the record to reflect this evening that, uh, Richard Waltonbaugh, who served this community as a member of council for four terms, passed away this last week. Uh, he preceded, uh, by a number of years, my participation, uh, but, uh, obviously the voters had a great deal of confidence in him to return him on a number of occasions, so I think our, our condolences go out to his family. Uh, the second thing that I would, I would like to say, uh, to, uh, Mr. Linsen Bigler, is that I am not convinced that we should permit golf carts on our streets. Uh, I think you've done a really terrific job making a case that golf carts can be made somewhat safe. But the fact of the matter is, as I look at, uh, some research, uh, one of the principal issues, and it's actually reflected on the very document provided us, is that, uh, the state standards leave out one very important component to the safety equipment, and that is a rollover bar. That when you look at many of the fatalities associated with the use of golf carts on public streets, they're associated with a rollover, where the, where the occupants are ejected or crushed by the vehicle itself. The second thing I would, I would also point out is, is that, uh, must not be able to travel faster than twenty miles per hour. Uh, when you look at many of the connectors in this community, not only Main Street, but Apple Grove, Everhard, Glenwood, East and West Maple, that traffic moves at thirty-five miles an hour. That is significantly faster than twenty. And as one who exits quiet Ambler Avenue regularly on Everhard Road, I can tell you that a twenty mile an hour vehicle would, would have a safety issue on that street. Even though a lot of cars are moving at the speed limit, I'm going to bet you, uh, David, that we pass out a fair number of tickets on that street in well in excess of thirty-five miles an hour. I think it would be very, very troublesome for public safety on that street. I think the third thing is this, and I just picked up, uh, while we, while you were talking, I think the third thing is this, and I just picked up while we, while you were talking, I was looking at, looking at a report from the Consumer Product Safety Commission on the number of, of accidents and fatalities, and I pulled up, pulled up a number from two thousand sixteen in the villages, where golf carts are fairly prevalent. In that year alone, it reported ninety-four EMS calls on its golf carts, seventy, seventy of which were fatalities. Now, why is that of interest to us? Because we know that every EMS call costs the taxpayers money in this town, that we only recover from insurance a very small percentage of the actual cost of, of driving the bus to the hospital.
Um, Darrell, could you state that again? What was the, those accidents, were those involved with a motor vehicle?
Uh, some were motor vehicles, others were driving off the road, I think one of them may have been a pedestrian who was hit by, by, they were walking in, in the, in the golf cart lane and.
And how many were fatalities?
Uh, there weren't fatalities, there were, there were ninety-four EMS calls, ninety-four, seventy of which involved injuries.
Oh, okay.
Injuries. So, even though I suspect they're making the vehicles themselves safe, the point is, David, that the operating environment may not be. And I think there's a real distinction there, as, as we look at, or we could, would consider permitting this, is this a safe operating environment to ride in? Very few people, for example, ride bicycles on Everhard Road. There's a reason for it, even though they're permitted under law, even though the law says you have to maintain a three-foot clearance, we generally don't want to encourage that. So, I'm not quite there yet, I've got an open mind, but you haven't closed the sale with one guy here. I'll give you the response, that's where we are, I'm, I'm, I'm still a no, but I'm open, I'm open to deliberation.
And Darrell, you were in the meeting, we had Police Chief Menoc here as well.
Absolutely.
And, and he echoed all of your comments, he was adamantly opposed to that for safety.
Yeah, I, I think they're just, you know, as you look at, again, you, you go to Google and it's the source of all knowledge, you know, candidly, part of the problem is, is that you can put lights, you can brakes, you can put a horn on them, but you can't make them really safe in a, you know, in a collision with a vehicle, or if the, if the golf cart goes off the road and really is at speed and hits something, and that's a problem. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Member Kiesler?
No report.
Member Ware?
I took a ball, person left, but I sure appreciate all his stats and all of the activity that's happening over there. I just got an email today from a woman that I had stopped, I think it was the morning beginning, they were using it, and she just thanked me again for the courts and for us thinking about that and just how much fun they've been having. She did reiterate again that they would love a bathroom at some point, and if at some point we say, hey, we need eight courts, obviously maybe a bathroom becomes important over there. But, that's just so fun to hear, all those people, and they're right, there's restaurants around there, All Greens is probably getting more business, and Rose and different things. I know when I've gone by, they really are busy. You know, in hindsight, yes, I guess we should have, you know, consulted with.
I didn't know.
Right.
It won't be our only one.
Right, right. I know, I was down looking at the ones that always have the water, I was like, what can we do down there? They're just sitting there with so much water, but it is big. I have to say, I just bought my own pickleball rackets today, and they're not cheap, and I did a lot of Google searches, so my dad will be getting another set for Father's Day, and Kurt doesn't know it yet.
He knows now.
Yeah. Exactly. He doesn't play, it's fine. So, so I was really excited to hear about that, and thanks to Johnson Control for spending the time, just keeping us informed, and after that report that we looked at, I mean, they agreed with a lot of the points, and I think what they're going to say is, hey, we do a lot of this, and we take the time and effort that's necessary to make sure it's right. Two, you know, Mark thinking about, do we need what kind of sledge press, and the differences, and the one or two, and, I mean, that's all part of the, the process, and.
Exactly.
They're not to that, I mean, they have, they need to do that and research it, and then give us the say, the say, and to Mark, also to you, to say, which one do we want? But I think the report was clear in saying, we have to do something, our lagoons are full, and it's, time is now. So, I think what their goal is, is they're going to give us a new amended report, take a look at that this week, and then we'll come back and we can discuss it next week. But I know, when we're talking with Rob, and I'm talking with you, some of those grants and some things, we just need to think about that in the process, so, that's it.
Okay. Member Fonte?
I just wanted to thank all the men in service, men and women, for all what they've done to give us freedoms, and also remind the administer, administrator over there that the flags are coming quickly, we got to get the rest of those flags out. So, I'm free on a Saturday if you, if you need a little extra help. So, the flags look nice, I got a lot of good comments, by the way. Did anybody get any comments on them?
They did.
Oh, Darrell's saying no. You need to get out more often, buddy.